All right, eight fifty-three, five minutes. Reconvene. Since we had a motion to recess, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene open session. I'll make the motion for Mr. Lewis, second, Mr. McCarthy. All those in favor of reconvening open session? Five to zero. Mr. McCarthy and Mrs. Wob. I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And Mrs. Wob. So, if I vote... Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Still trying to get my name right. Um, we do back... Back on the committee, Beth Anne was just pointing out to me, we do need, Paul Maynard was our MSBA convention alter, alternate. I'm the delegate, so we need an alternate. So, if the delegate doesn't, isn't able to attend the annual meeting...
I will go. I mean, I will be there.
Anybody else want to?
Oh, you're...
Okay.
But who's going? You're the main one now?
I'm the main delegate.
Good, okay. Just all.
Let's get ready.
Yeah.
No, that's not it.
And then, that was it? Who was the... No? That was good. Okay. All right, so Beth will get that squared around and chip it out to everybody, and if there's something you wanted to be on that you're not, let her know, or we can talk about it.
Do we need to vote to approve those delegates for...
I guess we do.
...confer? Unless everybody's okay with the names mentioned, so we can proceed with that process.
No, we're going to hold on.
And that was Dan, and Bo, and myself.
No lawyer.
So, uh... So, I'll entertain a motion to nominate Dan McCarthy, Bo Harrison, and John Stewart for the meeting confer with Petry.
So moved.
So moved. Mrs. Petry first, and second. Mrs. Wob for second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Uh, the next item. Okay. Approval of the MSBA membership dues, so I have a motion to approve the annual MSBA membership dues of eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Mrs. Petry first, second. Second, Mr. Stevenson. Any discussion?
Haven't we agreed on it? Because by how I made the comment that as long as they straighten out their policy, good side. So, we didn't already do this?
We did the policy services, but we didn't do the provision services.
Yeah. Okay. Well, good enough.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead. Don't, it's gonna take me longer.
Mr. McCarthy.
With according to this, despite, I am a pedestrian, I always put up now.
Okay.
Because I think they're a bunch of little hearts.
It's a joke.
Yeah. Just a little bit. They will be bearing it. I think we depend on it and go down there and one guy running the show and I just, I'm totally against it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Harrison.
I've, I've been to them seminars probably more than anybody on this board. That's to get you, to brainwash you, to think that you can't do nothing. But this is the board. The board has the power to do what they want to do. Change policies or whatever. If one of the superintendents in this area wants a policy, they can call them up and get a policy changed. Put it on the website and you, and nobody knows. I've said this for a long time. Now, I'm not talking about you.
Thank you.
But I've said it for a long time. Going with these people, uh... They could change these policies, the ones that's in the, in the schools, should change policies, and the board would never know nothing about it. And there's a lot of things the board don't know about. So, why should we stay with a, with an organization that is going to let people do whatever they want? You know, the superintendents belong to that organization. They're all run by the superintendents.
I don't think the superintendents belong to the school board association. The school board does. Superintendents have a totally separate...
I'll be standing corrected, they must've got out. But, uh, they're, they're all retired superintendents down there. Well, who do you think they talk to? Other superintendents. So, my, my thing is, it just... Ethical? Is that the word I want? Ethical? It's not ethical?
It'd be unethical.
Unethical.
Ethical means it's correct.
What?
Ethical means good.
Are you sure that ain't correct?
So, it'd be unethical.
Unethical.
Yes.
But that's, why should we be in an organization allows everybody else to tell, the school boards in Missouri, what they're gonna do?
But don't we, as a school board, have to decide whether we want to accept their proposals or their recommendations? And then we vote as a group to say, yes, we'll follow that, or no, we won't?
Yes, yes. When we, when the board approves a policy, Beth Anne sends it back to them and says it was approved or disapproved by the vote of, vote of the Board of Education. So, they know the board approved it.
And we can doctor it if we need to.
You can change it if the board wants to change how that applies to the, to the legal standard.
The board's gonna do that.
Can we do it all?
Yeah, we do it all.
I used to be on the frequent, could we do that? We could change them.
Any other discussion on the renewal of the MSBA service agreement?
I don't think we should do this.
Is it negotiable, buddy? No, it's based upon... Probably wrong on your end. On the ASB, yeah, okay. Yeah, it's based on the ASBR report, which is the big financial report for the last fiscal year.
Either you is or you're not. That's just your two choices.
Can I halfway?
Yeah, but I guess that means you're not.
Listen, they're not for us. They're not for us. They're for our superintendents. They can run another school.
Policies.
You, you're...
I heard you say that, but it seems...
They're, they're, well, when did that policy change? When did this policy change?
You can look at the bottom of every policy, and you can see when it was adopted, and every time it's been amended. And you should be able to go back from that, from that, and look at every, at the minutes of that board meeting, and see that the board made an action, voted on an action to change that policy on that day.
Do you want to, do you want to do driver's licenses? Not have to pay no money?
I just got a new driver's license.
Well, I can get you one. I can get you a social security number if you want, boy.
Well, thank you. Any other discussion relevant to the MSBA service agreement? Those in favor of approving the renewal of the MSBA membership dues of eight thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for Petry? Five, those opposed? Two. Five to two, motion passed. Next, we have the 2016 Annual Employee Recognition Dinner. Do I have a motion to approve the 2016 Employee Recognition Dinner, which I believe is scheduled to take place on Thursday, March the tenth? Miss Petry? Is there a second? Did you? Second? Miss Wob for second? Discussion?
Okay. I want to get it back where Scott Breeden there gets this breathing and does to present everything there, not superintendent, Scott Breeden there.
Hey, man, I'm, ooh, I'm gonna walk that way. Oh, yeah.
No, no, no. Hey, you do a lot of job, and then here's another thing. If you want to have a prayer in there, I want a prayer.
We can't do that.
We're all, we're not on school grounds.
It's a school-sponsored event. You can't have a prayer. Remember, we had that last year, and the board directed superintendent to let everyone know that we're not having a district-led prayer?
What, am I, is there a policy to keep me from talking?
Yeah.
Huh? That'd be an extra good policy to keep me from talking.
Can we just move on to approving the date for that? This is the...
I just want to throw that in there. Then he should be the one that takes over, he does everything.
So, we have a first and a second. I'm just the eye candy, what do you mean, I do everything? To approve the annual, 2016 Annual Employee Recognition Dinner. Is there further discussion on approving the dinner? Mrs. Wob, you had a question?
Yes, I do. Um, I don't know. I know that the school pays for retirees to be at the, you know, for the dinner. Is it possible that they can pay for the spouse or that comes with them?
That who, the...
With the retire, those who are retiring?
Oh, those who are, okay.
Because when I retired, I paid for my husband, and my daughter, and my son to come, which was, I mean, I was thrilled that they got to come, but I got to pay for it.
Oh, my gosh. Aw, you poor baby.
Well, I just, to honor those people retiring, I just thought that would be a, a nice gesture.
What, Mr. Inar, what does the dinner cost per head? Isn't it like fifteen bucks?
Fifteen.
Fifteen dollars, look who you get to entertain you.
And, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm a numbers guy, you see, you know that.
I know.
So, I'm just thinking, how many retirees in an average year do we have?
Like five?
I didn't necessarily want to say this.
Ten at the most.
Ten, six.
Ten at most.
Ten at most. So, we're talking about ten...
Hundred fifty dollars.
Ten, ten spouses, if it's just a spouse, and if you're close with two kids.
And they usually don't come.
Yeah, kids don't always come, but...
Okay, I was just looking at numbers, so we're talking, okay. Mrs. Petry?
This year, the total of the guests was seventy-five dollars.
The total of the...
Of all the guests, the retirees, was seventy-five dollars.
You put it, you put in...
That is all. I picked them, because I also agree that, I think that is crazy. That I, I do think that the district owes that. Maybe not owes it, that's not crazy. But it's a nice touch, you have someone who's worked for the district thirty years, twenty-five years, thirty years, and to me, the retiree, the spouse, and maybe, you know, two kids. And so, anyway, the cost for all those retirees this year was seventy-five dollars.
And the, as, as, I just, I love our retirees.
Thank you.
Case in point.
Give me my...
But the, the one thing that I, and being a finance guy and working in another district with a finance guy, we're talking about taxpayer money, number one, and so that we're spending taxpayer dollars on...
People that are not at the district school.
Exactly. And so, that's...
And you know what?
That's a...
I have no...
Just a concern.
I have no qualms with doing that personally next year as well.
Anyway.
They got insurance, we could be talking about...
Okay, so, is there any other discussion on the approval of the 2016 Annual Employee Recognition Dinner? Hearing none. Raise your hand if you, to vote for approving the annual recognition dinner. Seven zero, approved. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the Primary Masonry Sealant RFP. And we're just looking to approve dates, is that correct? Time line and dates. So, um, I will...
And then the Facilities Committee will review the RFP. We need to know the timelines for the Facility Committee to work under, get the RFP packaged and ready to get sent out.
So, refresh my memory, is there a proposed timeline in here?
Uh, basically, there are some blanks.
Okay.
Bid signed, under seal, executed, the date will be received at the owner's office hat.
So, we can't even approve anything until we have the...
We'd have some discussion.
We gotta talk before we can approve.
We could have a motion to set the second, and then discuss.
The motion is what?
Motion to set dates, or make a motion, we consider setting the dates.
So moved.
Mrs. Petry? Second. Second, Mr. Stevenson. So, we have a motion and second to set the dates for the timeline of the RFP for the Primary Masonry Sealant project.
Correct.
Ray, what dates we looking at? Discussion?
We would like to try to get this all together for the RFP, because it'll be presented to the board for next month. So, it means that now for us to have that provided for you, the RFP, RFP would have to be ready to be shown you. So, we would be looking for right about the third week of May, which would be right around the twentieth, we want that date. So, that means that all the bids will be coming back to us here at school district. And then on the board meeting, which would be, I believe, the twenty-eighth, I believe, of May, it'll be presented to the board for approval to go for that, whoever that would be selected as the contractor.
And what was the money?
Let's start. Here's the question I have, Ray. Will that work, or, in the past, we need to have the board approve us to take the RFP out. That's what we need. Because if we set the dates and select, send the RFP out, the board has not approved the RFP to be presented or out soliciting bids. You with me?
Yes.
Just by setting the dates doesn't fix the issue, unless the board tells the Facilities Committee to ratify the RFP and put it out, and then get all the quotes back to the board for review. Those are the two options we have in front of the board tonight. Correct?
Correct.
We gotta set dates of when you want to send it out, dates of when you want to return.
And that's the main two dates.
Right, but what we can't do is take it out to bid, or the board tells us to take it out to bid.
Right, and we would like, that's one, part of the reason, when we had the facility meeting on Thursday, the Thursday before, we would like their assistance to help us make those dates are ready, so we can present it to the board, but it is a very tight, fine line, and our gift is underway before the summer.
Are you wanting to present the complete RFP to the board next month, or are you wanting to present the bids?
We'd like to present the bid.
Okay, so...
Next month.
Yes.
So, that means the Facilities Committee, the board has empowered the Facilities Committee to make that decision, send it out, or the board has to tell us to send an RFP out and solicit bids, bring the bids back to us broken down? Those are your two options.
Facilities Committee is John, Bo, and Dan. Dan, are you on it?
Yes.
Yes. And we're meeting Thursday.
Can we do that, within a month?
Yeah.
If, if, if the, if the committee doesn't... Put the RFP, yeah.
Well, yeah, but how about the, the ones that's doing the bidding, the contractors?
There'll be four weeks.
Yes. We have to advertise it in the paper for two weeks.
So, if we approve it this...
I mean, my recommendation is, if we don't, if we don't move forward, then we're gonna be a month behind.
Well, yeah, but we shouldn't...
We want the work to start as soon as school's out.
Yeah, but we shouldn't get, just get in a big hurry.
Oh, I agree.
You know, we knew, we knew this.
Well, we got summer school going on as well, so, I mean, we're gonna be planning around that, but we want to give everyone a month to bid, a month to get their calendar set, you know, to know what's gonna be going on, and get that project done before school starts. So, they have the whole month of July, first week or till of August, to knock that out. That, that's the, right, Ray, I mean, I don't want to misspeak, you're...
No, you're totally correct, that's what we're looking for, because we can't start the project till July.
But, do you understand what I'm saying? Every time we do something, instead of planning out...
Oh, I got a plan. I got a plan. We're probably gonna need another board meeting within two weeks. So, the Facilities Committee, right, Dr. Isaacson, we're gonna need it, because this meeting's early, and our other meeting's so late, we're gonna have to have a hiring. We can also put the RFP in there for discussion. That's two weeks from now, the Facilities Committee looks at it, the board approves it, then we can take it up.
No, 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 no.
So, you're saying we're gonna, there is gonna be an emergency kind of meeting?
Yeah, there'll be a special called meeting.
As far as the scope of work, while we've known, I don't think we're trying to hurry the, this is the ceiling for the primary...
John, the point is, every time we do something, it's on the hurry. This building over here, on the hurry. The baseball, our football field, on the hurry. Everything's set to the last minute. Now, we're gonna get two weeks. If we're gonna hire people, we have to...
No, no, no.
You're going to another meeting.
No, we already, it's already on the agenda to have a special meeting. It's already on here to talk about tonight, for the hiring purposes and negotiations. We can add, the Facilities Committee can review the RFP. We can get the timelines and dates in, present it to the board, where the board has an opportunity to look at the complete RFP before they vote to send it out. That's the process. Not select somebody to do the job.
We've done this, we've done this before. And John, you was on, on committees, where the committee, 'cause all we done is getting a, a date, sent the date, and go. Ray will be there, you'll be there, so there'll be three board members, and the board can give us permission to set the dates, without it had to come back.
I think that's...
Well, and that's what we're talking about, do, do we want to give you guys that authority, or do we want to set it yourself? So, that's the discussion.
So, he's on my way to...
But that's the discussion, we need to let the rest of the board members in on here.
If, if the board desires for us to get the dates set this Thursday, we will give Ray the date and the pay, he will go out with the RFP, it'll go on the paper.
I've given you three options. I've given the board three options.
We come out as committee, we make the decision, we don't give Ray nothing, we give it to him. Somebody's got it all screwed up again. That's the man who's in charge.
So, here's what I want to know, from the other board members, other than Mr. Harrison right now, okay? Because we've heard from Mr. Harrison. The other board members, do you have a problem with letting our three members on the Facilities Committee, on, in their meeting on Thursday, determine the date, look that, determine the date, and either send Ray and/or Dr. Cornman with the RFP to get it done, and then we'll see it at the May meeting?
So moved.
So, yes. Second. Any other discussion?
Right.
So, we're going to give the...
Right.
Ray, yes, sir?
Just a comment to the board, our architect will be on site, we're meeting on Thursday.
Well, he should be.
So, there's first, second, any other discussion on that? No. All those in favor? And, refresh my memory. So, the setting of, so... The three members of the Facilities Committee to determine the date.
Dates.
Okay. Fantastic. So, all those in favor? Seven oh. Thank you. Do good work.
But, Dan, you put seven pride.
So, next, we are, we have an overnight field trip request. I will entertain a motion to approve the overnight field request to the varsity basketball team shootout at Monroe City on June fourth and fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Mrs. Petry, second. I'll second. Any discussion?
You won't see my signature, you'll see it on one page and not the other, and it was because they didn't have the information put in for the lodging. They didn't have it completed, so I stopped when I recognized that. So, you'll see it on one page, not the other, so FYI on that. Yes.
They using our bus?
They, they corrected it since, since my...
If you're not using our bus?
Is there a count, is there a total count yet?
Actually, we're not using bus, I believe the request that says, well, there's eleven students, we'll be using the two school vans. There'll be less than eleven, so we'll use the two school vans to transport the students, which I believe is what we did last year as well.
You know, if I was a teacher, and I had of an organization, I would raise hope beginning about all the money that we spend.
My boy. Is there any other discussion related to this overnight field trip request? Hearing none, we have first and second, those in favor? Seven zero. Thank you, approved. So, now we have a policy first reading, a group of policies that went out related to staff absenceism, tardiness. See the four policies there? Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the policies that are before you? The committee has asked that the board determine if employees may use sick leave during the time the employee is receiving workers' comp, with the total compensation not to exceed one hundred percent of the employee's normal salary. So, I, yeah, I noticed that in there.
You have a motion, second?
Yeah, so...
No.
You have a first and second?
Right, you're...
You have a first and second?
I do not.
Second.
Who was first?
Oh, we look at Aries.
Okay. Part of the workers' compensation, the past, the board has paid, allowed, excuse me, the board has allowed an individual to use their sick leave time. They get the first three days, they can use it. Once they're assigned workers' compensation, then they can use their sick leave days to make up for, like, workers' comp pays seventy-five percent of their salary. They're allowed to use their days to make up the other twenty-five percent, so they still get a hundred percent of their pay. Boy, MSBA is telling you that's, really, workers' comp is there as a support network, but if you allow people still gain a hundred percent of their salary, then the illness might continue to stretch on for some time, rather than that get-back-to-work mentality of what workers' comp's supposed to be. And workers' comp is not taxing, is that correct? I almost speak out of turn there, I'm looking down just at the game. It's not taxed, so it's possible for an employee to make over a hundred percent, but our current policy says you cannot make over one hundred percent of your current salary. But in the policies, MSBA is telling you, you need to not do that. I guess is the best way to put it. They strongly are advising not allowing that to happen.
I think it's against the law, yeah.
No, you can, you can...
Now, I don't care about what your policy says, I'm, we, we need to table that and find out what the law says.
Well, this is just the first read.
This is the first read.
And we ought to ask for you to get the law. I have no piece of paper of law, uh, then we can pass this.
Well, there's a bunch of them.
Well, I don't want to see a, a teacher or anybody else taking...
Well, you got the Fair Labor Standards Act, twenty-nine, USC subsection two oh one dash two nineteen eight dash C, there's all of them in there, the Family Medical Leave Act, Title VII, the Civil Rights Act, amended by Pregnancy Discrimination Act, there's all kinds of policies in here, or laws, legal references, that talk to you about doing those things. The policies that are in front of you tonight, which are GCBDA and GDBDA.
Question in regards to the, the mention of the not allowing them to go over a hundred percent. The, does that, workman's comp pay then come directly to the district? Or how, how is that tracked to, to make sure that that...
Should come to them.
Doesn't occur? Because as far as I know, workman's comp goes directly to the person, so how does...
Exactly.
How does that work, that we are not still given a full day of sick leave if it should only be twenty-five percent to keep them under a hundred?
Which is what we do, we have to track how much sick time they're getting, is what Leslie told me.
Well, here's, here's what, I draw the workman's comp, and I was always under the impression, if you collect any unemployment or anything, or drawing, they'll make you pay that back.
To workers' comp, not to us.
And I don't want to see no teacher have to pay money back when, when this board decided this or that.
No, we could just say, you don't do it retroactively. Is that what you're saying? Go back after the people that were paid too much to?
I'm talking about the workers' comp. We in charge of the workers' comp. This board's not in charge of workers' comp.
But you are correct. However, the board is in charge of allowing the employee to use the sick day to gain 100% of their pay while they're receiving workers' comp.
It should not be reverted again, reverted. We should not be making any suggestions or anything else that's going to get our teachers in trouble, one way or the other, until we see it in our hand, that workers' comp doesn't go along with them. Because you know how I feel about the MSBA.
And we could do that. I mean, we could bring that back to the next meeting. We haven't spent that...
I think that's what you're, and that's the law.
This is the first read. This is just, and the issue is the words entitled and permitted. If you look at GCBDA under Attorney Comments about the second paragraph, it says the district has this policy that says they're entitled to use those days rather than permitted to use those days. Big difference.
As our policy says?
Our policy says they're entitled, and the attorney is saying it needs to say permitted.
No, I ain't going to want that.
There's a difference in entitlement and being permitted.
And even you teachers, half teachers, you should go along with that.
What's that?
Saying permitted, that they're permitted. That means a lot permitted.
Well, the teachers on the policy committee understood and agreed that permitted was probably a better word, but they felt it was a board decision, right? Mrs. Petrie, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's what they said to us. The board didn't decide.
Was you on the committee?
I was on the committee. I sat there and I listened.
You did?
The chickens.
Oh, wait, you were on the, won't you speak up? You were there.
No, I just said that it was better met with the board.
Well, yeah, but that's passing the buck.
That's right. That's what I told them.
There was a lot of discussion.
There was a lot of discussion.
There was a lot of discussion.
Well, I want you to be able, if it's the policy, I want you to be able, in one, another one of these stands, that Mr. Harrison has to vote on something, we will let you if we want to, and we won't let you if we don't want to.
Are there, Ms. Welford?
I think using workers' compensation or sick leave, is that what it is?
No, no, no. Workers' compensation is insurance they get if they're injured on the job. And we're allowing them then to, in addition to that, take sick leave to make it 100% of their pay.
Because they only pay like 75. So, if I get hurt here and I can't come to school and I use workers' comp, I'm only going to get 75% coverage unless I use part of, part of the sick day.
Right. But there are a lot of individuals that utilize the cafeteria plan that have that supplemental, what I call Aflac insurance, to cover that gap.
Okay.
Because it's, you're talking about a very limited few, but I can tell you, we've had, well, I don't want to misspeak Dr. Isaacson, but we've had some individuals that have taken, I don't use the word advantage, but the term used by the MSBA attorney is promoting honest healing.
Honest healing?
Honest healing.
One of the things that we have provided this year is a means to still come to work and make accommodations so that individuals, while they may not be able to do one of their jobs, they can do job, appropriate jobs, so that they're able to...
Modified work duty.
So that they heal faster and...
That's that light duty.
That's light duty.
And if you stop and think about it, if you get hard on the job, it's kind of a ripoff to only get 70% of your salary.
I'd stuff mine and go on.
So, and you're using up your own sick days. And there has not been a problem, I'm assuming?
I wouldn't say that.
No.
Oh, you wouldn't? Because I thought you had at our meeting. So, that has transpired since then?
Yes.
Okay.
The word honest healing is very well written here, because the problem you have, if one or two individuals take advantage of that, it ruins the 198 employees that we have around the factory.
You're doing the right thing.
Correct.
Can we get one conversation going here, please?
Yeah, all right.
Focus to one conversation that was occurring over here. So...
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Beth.
My brainpower just went.
The question was, in the policy committee meeting, I'd stated that we had not had individuals take advantage of this up to this point. However, Dr. Isaacson and I have had several conversations, that individuals, if it's there and they know, tend to, we don't use the word milk the system, but definitely use it to their advantage. If they need it, we don't have a problem with it. But for some folks, if you can stay at home and collect 100% of your salary and not have to work, there is no incentive to come back to work and get healthy. I mean, that's the issue that we're seeing, and we were having to discuss that in executive session.
And we didn't talk about this at the policy committee. Is it feasible to give that staff member a choice? You can have 75% of your salary, or you can use your sick days.
I think once they're assigned workers' comp, it's workers' comp is workers' comp. And then you got to deal with those rules and regulations, and you're not coming back until they say you can come back.
Right, until you're released.
And once they say you're coming back, you're coming back. Now, you can, you can do the modified and light duty, and that helps in the law room with, with your workers' comp experience and your rates.
Okay.
Whether they increase or decrease. So, if you, I mean, if you don't have, if you don't have light duty and you're saying, you know, you're sending the doctor the list of, these are, these are Eric's job duties. If he can't do them all, I don't want him back.
Right.
Once he can do all these, he's welcome back. Well, then, he's got to wait until he's 100% perfectly fine and do everything, and then he can come back. Well, that's longer time that he's out on workers' comp leave and getting the 75% and maybe the 25% we're allowing. But if we give him, allow him some modified duties, we say, well, okay, Eric normally has to lift, you know, 500 pounds every day, three times a day. If he can only, if he can't lift that, but he can do everything else, he can come back. We'll find out the things are...
Yeah, gray papers in pain.
And then, because then he can come back sooner, and then, once he gets...
Get his pay.
Yeah, once, you know, so then he's back on, on our pay and not on workers' comp, and so it's, it's helping our insurance.
So, there has been issues since policy committee.
Yes.
And that changes my perspective.
But now, there's only been one, two issues, one issue, two issues that I know of.
But that's only been in two weeks.
Yeah, well, because the person was on workers' comp at the time. Now, like I said, since it's an identifiable personnel issue, we can talk about an executive. And we bring you up to speed on that.
Mr. Harrison?
So, so this went from one thing to another thing. What we're doing to save what, what workers' comp charges up as a percentage, we're going to, we're going to start cracking down and making people come back to work if, if the phony doctor says that you're, I've done, I've done workers' comp.
Not phoning your office.
Let's say somebody's got an arm injury. I can still conduct...
Oh, yeah. John, come on, come on. You gotta, man, you gotta start thinking of that stuff and stop trying to, they do that to custodians that, if they don't like the custodian, they got a policy, they can get rid of the custodian because his job's gone. He don't have the job no more. So, he can, we don't need him, he can take another job in the district. I've heard that one.
Okay, so this being just a first read, new board members, there's no vote we have to take tonight. It's a little bit of a discussion if there's more questions.
Okay. On GCBDA, page six, this was something that we discussed, and what is written here is not what I wrote down that day. I wrote down, it's under vacation, all professional staff, da-da-da, it's the second one, an employee must submit a written request for vacation, and this says when extends over four days consecutive. And I wrote down in quotes, four or more consecutive days, which is different.
Different.
Than what this says.
Okay.
And so, I'm throwing that out there because there's a discrepancy from what I wrote down, and Rhonda, you were there. So, are you with me or...
Yeah, that's been, yeah, that's been the entry.
Oh, yeah, blame it on her. Come on.
I'm looking at it, and I agree with you.
I thought it was yours.
No, no.
That's why you're...
What, I believe you are correct, that we said...
Sorry, Beth.
Petrie.
Four consecutive...
We said four or more consecutive days.
Four or more consecutive days.
Was the policy committee.
I'm going to change your name.
Four or more consecutive days.
Okay. And I would just like to throw out there, I think that personally, I'm still thinking that that might be too many, like, you know, so first reading, just thought process, but the committee decided on four or more consecutive days.
Good.
Well, and I wanted to know, are those days when school is in session? When they're, if those are school days or if those are student days?
Because this is 12-month employees.
Yeah. Or is it days, or does that make a difference?
It probably doesn't make a difference because they get vacation, 12-month employees get vacation days, so it's probably any time they want to take more.
And that's why that line is added in there about distracts or disrupts district operations.
That's what that's for?
So, for example, yeah, you see that line in there. If it disrupts district operations, then it'll be denied if it's four or more.
Because they have to get permission for that.
Correct. If it's four or more. That's why that's in there.
And I was just throwing this out from the committee. I mean, the discussion basically dealt with, or around the 12-month, sorry, 12-month administrators, building administrators, that the necessity that they should be in their buildings at all possible when students are there, even though, you know, they can take vacation days obviously. So, that was kind of the discussion. If John Isaacson isn't taking vacation, it doesn't affect the kids like it does if, I don't know who's a 12-monther, I don't know. Okay, Calista has decided she's going to take the last week off before Christmas. You probably wouldn't do that, I realize, but...
I wouldn't let her do that.
Well, our teachers wouldn't let her either, maybe. They don't have control of that. But, you know, that was the discussion, you know, dealing with the 12-month building administrators more so than we, like Central or others. So, food for thought, because it's just first reading.
Any other discussion on first reading?
No, let's go home. I got a party going.
Yep.
Good luck.
Okay, next is program evaluations. Number one, H1, graduation follow-up, and H2 is MAP. Do I have a motion to through both the graduation follow-up and MAP program evaluations?
So, probably on both.
Beth?
MAP?
Yes.
Second?
Jen? Discussion on graduate follow-up in MAP.
You know, I put on there that I sure would like to see more Chromebooks used for our kids during that, that they could do it in their classroom with a little, a Chromebook, and they don't have to be hiking around the building, going to labs and scheduling all of that, and it would make it a lot shorter time.
One to one initiative would be great for that.
I know. This year, they did struggle with the Chromebooks, but the next...
Well, I just after using them in a Festus when I was studying, I know that's okay.
The Chromebooks had a big issue, but they were trying to work it out at the beginning of the festival.
I think it got worked out, but I was thinking something similar, or at least something along that line.
Yeah, we just used the Chromebooks for the ELA program all last weekend, and they were awesome.
Yep.
And staying in the classroom and not having to leave, and, you know, I just pull them out, and the cards were really good, and it worked really well. And they've used them all year long, so they were...
I'm sure Mr. Murray would love to hear that conversation. There you go. I mean, if we could get, how many are you talking about? How many we tested one time?
We've got 20 or 19 of the junior highers using this week.
How many kids, Mr. Reed and Howard, take the fifth grade ELA or, pardon me?
Two fifty, two seventy.
So, they have to have 275. What's that run, Chromebooks, $100 a piece?
Same time. Is that all the same?
No.
Yeah, and that's why X is off the way.
Ninety thousand would buy you 300.
How much?
Ninety thousand would buy you 300.
But he's only testing 100 at a time, so he just bumped that down.
Well, no, because you got to go other, other buildings that are testing as well.
Does anybody realize that everything is going to the computer?
You got it.
Yeah, that's right.
Everything.
Yeah.
And so, every time we do something, we got to do it cheap, cheap. We don't want to give these kids what they need in a Chrome pad, that's what they need. We should be trying to go for that.
We are.
No, I don't think so. That ain't, that ain't...
Do we have any other discussion around the MAP?
I just wanted to tell you they worked really well, and it was a, it was very helpful because you were already in the Chrome program and, you know, which is what the tests came through, and it was, it was really good. I'd like to see us move towards that.
Yes, ma'am.
Buy a kid Chrome pads.
No, it was...
Any other discussion?
Teach classes.
Those in favor of approval of the graduate follow-up and MAP program evaluations? Seven oh. Thank you. Motion passes. Next is the approval to adopt the St. Louis Regional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 to 2020, so moved by Ms. Petrie and seconded by Mr. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor to approve motion to adopt St. Louis Regional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan 2015 to 2020? Six? Those opposed? One, six one.
I just didn't feel like raising my right hand.
Next, do I have a motion to approve the bid of Interstate Studio for the 1,550 planners for all three buildings at $1,213?
So moved, I guess.
Mrs. Petrie, second?
Could you repeat the motion?
The motion to approve the bid of all, of Interstate Studio for the 1,550 planners for all three buildings at $1,213.
Without the shipping?
I'm going to go pick them up.
You are?
Can I have a second so we can talk about something here?
I just didn't know.
Second. Second, Jen. Discussion, Mr. Reed and Howard.
Big question.
If not for $1,213.
Okay.
I was thinking that sounded rather low. No. It's more like $2,929 or $2,387 are the two low bids.
I think you're going to pay the difference.
None.
The recommendation is for campus agenda from Interstate Studios as a supplier. Lowest bid was 1213 with shipping included by 67.
Yeah, it was the lowest bid by $1,200. If you, if you don't, last year, last year I went and picked them up, which saved $600 in shipping, so our mischeduled does not a lot.
Well, I'll take care of the shipping.
Okay, so...
Maybe $100, I'll go there.
So, then, then it would be...
We just need to know the amount. The board needs to know the total amount.
Yeah, give us, so we can amend this motion.
$2,387.
So amended.
Amended by number one. Number two was...
Uh-oh, Lewis.
Mr. Lewis.
You got to...
He's got a...
Now, that is excluding shipping, correct?
That is excluding shipping.
Very good. Okay.
Mr. Isaacson? Would you, see if you can find Mr. Lewis, please?
We need him to amend his second.
He's going to bathroom, man.
The break wasn't long enough.
We're getting, they're doing us the way they do the teachers. We ain't got a second to do nothing.
They'll get to the bathroom.
I'm going to turn into a...
Come on, Mr. Lewis.
When you do this homework, then turn to dad, so try to get his dad like...
I'm sorry, Jen, I'm sorry.
Side to side.
Would you amend your second to the motion from $1,330 to 23?
Yes.
Amended to 87.
I second.
Okay, we got a first, second now. Is there any other discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor of purchasing 1,550 planners for all three buildings at $2,307?
And Doc's going to the mall?
Yep.
I'll second it.
Is that a yes or a no, Mr. Harrison?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's seven oh. Motion passed. Okay, now we need to set a, uh, wait, 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 wait. Which one is out of? Okay.
I am going on Festus.
Okay, so that's right.
That's right.
So, uh, we need to set a special meeting date for negotiations in the hiring staff. Any suggestions?
Does it make a difference what day it's on? I mean, what day of the week?
Depends on what week.
Yeah, well, they said two weeks from now.
Oh. So two weeks from tonight is May the fourth. So are we, is that the week we're talking about?
The eleventh. I have, positions will be posted internally for five days.
Okay.
And so to do it the following week and then get, get the information to you, we really kind of limit our interviews to three days. So anytime the week of the eleventh would be.
The week of the eleventh?
There you go.
Two weeks before, Monday?
Yep.
Two weeks before graduation.
Closer to the eleventh would be, or at the end of that, the eighth, or, or, excuse me, the seventh or the eighth, or the eleventh would be.
We're talking May, right?
Yeah.
Because then the same rules apply for that board meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I cannot make the eleventh personally.
The fourteenth is a Thursday, that's our, we're kind of used to.
Um, if you don't mind me talking with a dribble.
So we want to do, well, the fourteenth is senior awards night.
Can that sound good?
Uh, let's see here. Twelve is.
Who's day the twelfth?
No, twelve is spring band concert.
Wednesday the thirteenth.
Thirteenth is Renaissance Assembly, so that's fine as far as the school's calendar.
We could do the twelfth.
Twelve?
Oh, you can. The fourteenth, or that's the day you're getting?
No, can't do that.
We're talking the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Yeah, do it on the thirteenth. It's a lucky day.
It's in the, on Wednesday, it's not Friday.
Wednesday the thirteenth, not Friday the thirteenth.
I'm telling you, you can't do it.
You're just lucky we're not the Black Cats. We're the Hawks.
I have commitment.
I'm retired.
Was the eighteen too late?
Yeah.
If the sixth or the seventh of that previous week towards the end.
Seventh or eighth. I really don't wanna do Friday.
This is gonna be just us, executive session, right?
This is executive session unless we have that RFP.
For the primary.
Yes, ma'am, but I don't know what we do, but do you tell us, you ready to send it out, or you tell us? Then you won't have to worry about the RFP. It'll be strictly executive.
Okay.
Seventh?
Seventh. Let's see, on the seventh, the district has varsity baseball, which won't affect anyone in here, I don't believe. So that's it, on the seventh.
Are you kidding me?
What time? How much time will we need?
Six o'clock. Six o'clock on the seventh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's great.
Six o'clock on the seventh. You would send an email app, is it like tomorrow to make sure we get it right? Because.
Five, seven, fifteen, somebody's gonna slap in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had a motion to second yet, so. So Lisa first, Eric second. Set special meeting on the seventh, meeting seventh at six o'clock for negotiations on hiring staff.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. So, all those in favor? Seven oh.
You guys ain't done, you're not by yourself.
Okay, next is the human resources report. I have a motion to approve the three positions as recommended for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. And that is the primary Title I reading, teacher, primary communication arts reading, interventionist, and the district speech and language pathologist.
Do you need a motion before we discuss?
Yes.
Okay, so I will move so we can discuss.
Second.
First, Beth, second, John. Discussion.
Would you all like for us to give an, what all this is about first?
Yes. Let's go.
Since she's ready.
Dr. Isaacson and Dr. Kostin. I guess Dr. Kostin since it's primary, primary, and then Mrs. Rain for the, the district speech and language path. Here, I'll take.
So this is different than what we have in our.
There are actually two separate requests. The first one is that we currently have two part-time employees teaching Title I special reading.
No, because I ain't gonna read it. Give me four or five pages.
Okay. So we have two Title I part-time teachers that teach three point hours a day in the AM for a cost of thirty thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars a piece. So the total is sixty thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. They do not receive health benefits, but they do have six days of reading a year. That would be the award packet. So the proposal is to make it one full-time position for an estimated salary of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. That's the first motion that we're asking for you to consider. And then I have a follow-up proposal after that. As you know, we're getting ready to adopt a new series, so if we're going to switch from part-time to full-time for training, it'd be a good idea to do that at the same time. So you ready for?
Repeat what you just said?
Sure. From the beginning?
No, about with the new reading series?
Sure. So right now we're getting ready to adapt to the new reading series. So if we're going to move from two part-time people to one full-time person, we would like to have them trained under the new series.
Oh, have them trained?
Yes. So if, if that is what you'd like us to do, there's a rationale behind it. It would space-wise free up another full-time person with a new one. But that's the second issue that we were gonna talk about. Is it okay to move to the second one, to get it all at once?
Certainly.
All right, so the second proposal is, kind of give you a brief history of tutoring. Long ago, we had the air money, so we had four tutors. Pretty much the whole full year, it had a, I think it's reminded to you, it's in your, in this little summary, and they got paid a total of thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars a piece. When that air money dried up, which they only capped in after two years, we still saw the value in the program. We serviced about seventy kids a year. There were kids that were in the bottom ten percent on our AINSA benchmark, students who were up for retention or were retained, so they're working with our kids in need. Our tutoring budget was only fourteen thousand dollars five hundred. So those teachers agreed, two of them, agreed to stay on and work on a limited basis, basically twenty-three weeks of the school year, to provide tutoring service. And we still have a great need for our students in need, and we would like to have someone there from the beginning of the school year all the way to the end, so they receive service every week. With my tutoring budget, I can't afford to do that unfortunately. So you can kind of see. You can kind of see in the, the packet, like our AINSA scores. So our students, every year, are assessed that very first full week of September. And if you look, we are the gray, and if you state of Missouri in the green, so for our first grade students, this is the first time that they're taking a reading practice. It's basically a sheet of paper, and it has a bunch of words you can copy, and they have to read it in one minute. So it's how many words they can read in one minute. So for a lot of them, this is the first time they've had a test like that. So this is where they come in in first grade, and as you can see, we are a little bit below the state of Missouri. And that's starting from, our students are doing loads and from the top, so we're really compact if you're looking at that box in this chart. And then in second grade, you can see that we've pretty much caught up. We're right on key with Missouri. But we still see that we have a need to make sure we're reaching those students. So this is our fall benchmark. We took this in September. We flipped the page, just what we did in January. So in January, this is where our students are. As you can see, first grade, we made some progress. We made some gains. We're not caught up to the state of Missouri. We still have that condensed spread. So we really need some consistency there. But second grade, once again, is right on track with the state of Missouri comparatively. We really see a need to make sure our students are receiving that extra full that is served every week for the entire school year, because right now they're only getting twenty-three weeks. And then the next page, just to show some consistency, you might want to see how our kindergarten students, um, they do not read words, of course, they have lettering. So they're given a page with just a mix up, a bunch of letters, lowercase and uppercase letters, and this is how many letters they can read in the first minute. And as you can see, once again, we're slightly below the state of Missouri when they start that very first week. So these are kindergarteners who not, most likely have not had instruction, but for small calculations. So this is what they could do that very first week in September. And if you flip the page, you can see once again, in the layer benchmark, we made a lot of progress, but we still need help. They are doing an excellent job, and I would really love to show you in this grade just how far they really come. It is amazing how we start out below, and we, in some cases, we beat. And like I suggested in our language charts and our math, we would be happy to know in math computation, we are actually above the nation average. But in reading, we need help. So that's why I'm asking for you to consider possibly giving us a full-time reading interventionist. That way, our students have that service from day one and don't have to wait till the very, we start the very last week of September. They end about the week before Christmas, and then they come back the last week in January and end that first week in May. So this would give our students access to services year round.
On the so, so these, these people here? Ones in the morning, ones in the afternoon? Five days a week? Two?
We're, we're both due mornings, five days a week.
Five days a week?
But they're not the tutors, so those are the readings for special reading. Two separate positions.
So how many tutors you need?
Well, I'm asking for one full-time for you to use that out of the Title I money, and then I think if there, correct me if I'm wrong, if there was leftover funding, you as a board would kick that in. And then as far as my tutoring budget, you would allow me to still use my tutoring budget to have still two tutors come in, but not during the full school year, and then possibly we could start addressing some of our students in math.
Well, um.
Reading's our first priority, sir.
Priority is reading, and I would love to see that math in there. But we don't pay these people.
And that, that is something also linear packet. Our tutors, of course, have reflected money increase in pay because they are making significantly less than what they have made. But they are separate from Title I reading. The Title I reading was paid in annual salary. Our tutors are paying right now a separate seventy-five dollars a day.
So that's a separate issue.
Separate issue, yes, sir.
Right now, the issue before the board is the primary one reading teacher, which you just talked about, and that's where you're paying the fourteen five. You'd like to keep your fourteen five for you in the building to distribute to the teachers, or keep one tutor or work that around in assisting kids in reading hand or math, and have the board use Title I resources if available to offset the cost of that position, and then locally pick up the funding, whatever's left. Is that what you're?
I believe, I believe we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
That doesn't cause me some plant issues with Title I?
With Title I, we did have two, two retired teachers with a half-time, so that position would be a new position because it would be a full-time position, which they're welcome to, my understanding is they're welcome to say that they're attracted and keeping that position. Is that accurate? And then?
So the title, the Title I reading teacher position? The Title I reading position, it, that is, and then you have the comm arts reading interventionist.
Correct.
Which one is currently being taken care of by two half-time retirees? Which position is that?
Number one. The Title I is currently being taken care of by two retirees, and we're asking that move into one full-time position.
Okay, but, but is, is that these people?
We can't identify.
We're not saying names.
They are the readings. We do have readings specialist in attendance.
Well, let's just, well, no, I'm, I'm sitting here, and if I wanna, if I wanna ask a question, I'm not gonna be told that, no, you can't say that. I'm not mentioning.
Well, there's some things that you can't discuss except in executive session. I, individually identifiable records, so.
Well, then we need to, because I wanna give you everything you need, okay?
So we're talking about the positions right now.
We can replace these people with their knowledge.
Well, the board packet kind of outlines here for the board, cost comparisons. If you scroll on down, and that's, I think the next thing she's gonna try to cover, or I can cover for you.
The cost comparison?
Currently, you have two part-time individuals that work three and a half hours a day, and they work in the AM.
Correct.
Now, Dr. Isaacson told me that one of the concerns was that you wanted to have some full-time, all-day coverage, not just in the AM coverage.
Yes.
Okay. Now, you have three and a half hours, sixty thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars is what you're paying.
Currently.
Currently for those two positions. What you would like to do is one full-time reading teacher is thirty-seven thousand nine seventy-eight. And then the full-time comm arts interventionist is thirty-seven nine seventy-eight. And I think we're just comparing salary to salary here, right, Dr. Isaacson?
It does not have.
Benefits.
The benefits.
Okay, so the current cost, the current cost and salary alone, uh, for your current situation is sixty thousand two eighty-nine. You can add one other person, salary seventy-eight nine fifty-six, so that's fifteen thousand six seventy-four left over, that you're wanting federal programs Title I to pick up that cost.
Correct.
Okay. All right, hopefully that got some questions going.
Okay, so can we talk about one at a time?
Yes.
Okay, um, when I read this, and I emailed Dr. Isaacson, because this is strictly comparing salaries, and the two currently part-timers have no benefits paid. So they are servicing seventy-two students, is that right? Seventy-two students at actual cost, because there's no teacher retirement paid by the district, nothing. That is true cost. Whereas replacing those two with a Title I reading teacher, you have a salary of thirty-seven thousand, but you have benefits of eighty, eight thousand two hundred and eighty-seven, and then you would have teacher retirement that the district pays on top of that.
So if you compare apples to apples, you're comparing the two part-time positions to the one full-time position.
Correct, right, right. And if one full-time teacher handles sixty students, and our two part-timers are willing to continue, we get twelve more students serviced, right? Am I, am I right?
I think the other concern is the timeframe.
The expense, okay.
The, the.
Are they willing to?
I gotta break in here for just a second, matter of procedure, because it's ten o'clock.
Oh, we have to have a motion.
Extending the motion.
So moved.
For the meeting to continue past ten o'clock.
And Eric, the way sir thinks, is this stupid?
Who's making that motion?
I will.
Bo, and Dan, okay. So we have a motion second to extend the meeting past ten o'clock. Those in favor?
I thought that was silly. The first time it happened.
You're down, so seven oh.
I just let you know.
I really don't want to, but that's right. We got important stuff to do. So, continue, I'm sorry.
So, um, you know, when you're actually looking at the cost and the services, you know, I look at that, and we're getting a pretty good deal. As long as the two part-timers are willing to continue, and, you know, I, you know, the concern of starting a new series, yes, but experience versus a newbie, and, um, that newbie next year, year down the road, when these two decide not to, can still get the training from people that have gone through that. So I'm concerned about, this looks like it's kind of equal, but when you consider all of those costs, I don't think it's so equal. Especially for those twelve kids that may not get serviced. Have you talked, I mean, is, if, if they, they're both in the morning, can one do morning and one do afternoon?
He can be directed from.
Possibility?
I'm in.
We're missing a vote.
Mr. Harrison, go ahead.
We can't, we can't spend enough on these kids getting reading help.
I agree with you.
Why can't we, we spend money just on anything we wanna spend it on, and don't even have nothing to but why can't we keep these people and give her what she needs?
So you're saying keep these two plus one more?
One more, or, or don't you have two more that you used to?
Those are tutors, those are tutors.
Right now, we're just dealing with the Title I.
I'm asking for one, but I.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, that would be awesome. Um, and I guess my other question for, there's a fee here, and I'm not a Title I person, okay? Don't really comprehend.
Well, then let's give her what she needs.
Why is this Title I reading teacher, there's a fee, but a Title I instructional coach is covered?
Different programs. Different programs.
Different programs, even though it's Title I.
You got Title I, then you got Title II. You have federal programs that are, that are different. So we have, depending upon how you code them, is whether it's a supplant or it's a supplement issue.
That was.
Right, that's what you're running into. If it's a supplant, if you're supplanting district funds because you already have the position, that's against the law.
Correct, I knew that.
By creating a new position, which has to have a particular title.
So my oops was Title I versus Title II.
So you said that funds are running out or ran out from the?
For the tutors.
The, the air money, the federal funding, so it's a one-time.
But not for the reading teachers. That's just something that we're paying for, and the, the real problem or the, the change that prompted all of this was the fact that we needed somebody in the afternoon.
We, we need help in reading across the board, and this was a solution. It's also a space issue, so if we went to one full-time, I would have another table to put that.
But that full-time, it's still, it'll be less to put at the table.
Right. I will find a spot for somebody.
Bo?
Thank you. Thank you. Either we're gonna pay to give you this full-time teacher, keep these teachers, or we're gonna continue on like we've always been trying to play catch-up. I hear this. Well, if they don't do it right over here in this building, they don't teach us nothing. They're not... Or they don't teach us nothing. If we had to give you a reading, a full-time reading thing to help it when you get over into elementary, if they still don't have it, then we should be able to give that elementary teacher help too. You see, all the way around if we have to. Then... But you're the one that's asking and I think these people do a terrific job. And I'm not going against you, but I think we ought to pay her or let her have her part-time and her full-time plus these two to get this up. We could put them somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear it. I had a motion.
Well, we've already got one motion on the floor.
Who did it? Who did it?
And so, is there more discussion, Ms. Peters?
Um, okay.
And Dan?
Conflict. We still have staff that are not on the proper salary schedule. And so, my question is, is this something that we could readdress after negotiations to see money-wise? And then that person could be hired? Those people are available? Or do we have some in the district that would move into that position? Is that what I'm saying?
I think I'm following you as far as how to fund them.
Like postpones?
She can wait until after negotiations to bring it back up again.
Because so that if we fund the salary schedule, then we have money to add additional positions.
So, what you were asking for was a reallocation of current expenditure...
Right.
With the difference trying to be covered with federal programs and local of fifteen thousand plus eight thousand in benefits. Whereas they're talking about completely adding a whole new position, which I can tell you, Mrs. Ginge and I have not even had that conversation.
I don't know if she's gringing.
To answer that question that you had... With the reading teacher, I would imagine that we'll have several individuals within the district very interested in that position.
Okay.
Depending on whom is best qualified, our candidate, that will probably, if it's an internal person, there'd be a teaching opening. And depending on what that is, there'd be different...
Because if it's elementary levels, then it's easier.
If it's elementary, it's gonna be fairly easy.
Right, right.
Well, here's what I think.
Because...
I probably know the two people that want the job. What I'm trying to say is I don't care if these two people need the job. I want these two people because there ain't... Nobody can replace them. Have you ever met them?
Yeah.
Have you been around them? No. Do you have? And there is nobody can replace these people. I'm suggesting to give you the extra money, find it somewhere, but pay you seventy-five thousand and more.
Well, that's for two.
Okay. Give you that because we had to jumpstart this reading. Quit this here arguing and bickering and give you what you need. Tell them about what you do at night.
You sleep, I hope.
What's a whole man who has a night with the parents in him? Sorry.
Our partners, our reading department does have a partners program where they have parents come in and teach them instructional reading strategies. And I think we can all agree that their Title I reading department is stellar and we are fortunate to have every member of our staff. I'm just asking for more members.
Well, then that's what I want to give you. More people, not take away... You know, I see a trend of every time here lately that...
Is this germane to this discussion on these positions?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
We always try to save the money, but not give the person what they really need. Compromise. You can't compromise with a kid's education. That's what this money is for. It's thrown in here tax-wise is for these kids. If they need extra teachers, they need extra teachers. I've been saying this for twelve years. Twelve years what you should do. And there ain't a board that's ever said anything about kids.
I'm in my motion and deal with each one of these positions separately.
Each one separately. So, then we're gonna become three motions?
Sorry.
The second was Mr. Lewis, I believe.
Because I'm afraid if we don't...
So, is that okay to...
Sure.
And so, the first one's gonna be the primary Title I reading teacher?
Correct.
I got you, just a second, Dan.
Correct.
Uh, the second is gonna be the primary Communication Arts slash Reading Interventionist.
Yes.
And the third is gonna be the District Speech and Language Pathologist. So... Mr. McCurry?
Why would we really want to take away people that are... Have the expertise and have been there? I mean, especially with reading. That should be the foundation in the school. You learn reading early, you know, and it progresses. It can't really be something that goes on a... It always amazes me that mumsel had all these classes for teaching reading secondary students and... It just doesn't make sense. You get it to fundamental. It's a block right at the beginning in the elementary, I mean, primary. And I don't know, people have done a real good job. It is... It's a bonus that you don't have to pay some of these perks. I mean, you know, we should be looking to save money. And if they're giving us an opportunity here and they're, you know, willing to continue, I would think that that would be the best move, best move. And then possibly with Bo's talking there and that and on because I...
You're trying to get off an education.
Yeah, we need... We need help in the reading area, you know?
She's doing... She's doing whatever she can. She's got a program that takes some disciplines and everything else. Why would I want to say no to her?
Yeah, this is where some money should go.
The other time I would say no to her, but this, I won't say no to her.
I have a question about space allocation. Because if we're gonna have... If we've already got two folks in a space... And then we... And then we're gonna add... And they're there for half of the day. And then we're gonna add another person. So, you're gonna have three...
Full-time.
In there for half the day and one there that's the other half a day. So, one all day, two half-days. Is that all right?
I would request that you have three people work morning, afternoons, so that we have a table.
But we give you... If we give you the people, the full-timer and the part-timer, if we keep these people... You got... You got pretty... Pretty well enough people.
I would think you can get them.
Well, I'm willing to give you whatever you need. You know what I have about reading? I want that reading.
So, we are in some more discussion on the Title I reading teacher.
Does anybody else feel a concern to postpone the full-time?